This meeting is now called to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Witchy?
Here.
Mr. McGurven?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Jason. First item on the agenda are a couple of proclamations.
Okay, the first proclamation is National Apprentice- uh, Apprenticeship Week. Proclamation, whereas the rising costs of higher education and workforce training make registered apprenticeship an increasingly important and affordable career training pathway, and whereas companies and employ a more diverse workforce see greater increases in productivity and profitability as well as lower staff turnover, and whereas economic equality for all is measured not only by protection from discrimination but also by equitable access to quality job opportunities, and whereas apprenticeships help alleviate racial and gender disparities in the workforce by providing more opportunities for women and communities of color, and whereas apprenticeships are a critical pathway to participate fully and equally in our city's growing economy, and whereas apprenticeships offer a gateway to the middle class delivering opportunities for apprentices to earn and learn through structured on-the-job training and to receive credentials for achieving competency, and whereas the city of Renton recognizes organized labor's longstanding efforts and commitment to developing high-quality apprenticeship programs that foster highly skilled workers, and whereas the city of Renton places a priority on apprenticeship programs, and today's observance provides an opportunity to acknowledge the skills, dedication, and leadership of the many people who improve our state and nation through their contributions in every sector of the workforce. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim November 12th through the 18th, 2018 to be National Apprenticeship Week in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance and witness whereof I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this fifth day of November 2018. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Witchy?
I move that the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Witchy, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have a number of individuals here representing the trades and instruction. We got Angel, Rob, and Shauna that come up and receive this proclamation. And you're gonna have to come over here so they can get a picture of you. If you'd like to say a few words at the podium, you're welcome to.
So, I am the Director of the Construction Center of Excellence that supports the construction industry and all the education and training programs across the state. I cannot tell you how much apprenticeship really speaks to my heart in affording people opportunities for living wage careers, and my son is now one of the four students in the Renton School District to be a high school that is in a youth apprenticeship. So, this means even more to me because of that, so thank you very much.
That's terrific.
And I just want to say I appreciate your leadership in terms of the city council on you, Mr. Mayor, in supporting this work. We're the second-largest apprenticeship-serving institution in the state, and so we value our partnership with apprenticeship and organized labor, and this means a lot, and hopefully all of you can attend the dinner that we're having next week on the 13th. So if you can make it, 5:30 to 7:30. If you need more details, let us know. But thank you once again for taking the time and with this proclamation, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Okay, the next proclamation is DECA Month and Lindbergh and Renton DECA Promotional Month. Whereas DECA is an association of marketing students who are developing leadership skills, learning about business and marketing, and setting future career and education goals, and whereas DECA prepares members to handle real-world situations in marketing, business, and entrepreneurship, and whereas Lindbergh's High Schools and Renton High Schools, 50 DECA members are part of an organization of more than 11,000 members in 158 chapters in Washington State, and whereas Lindbergh High School's promotional project is organizing students to be ready for any business situation that could be presented to them in future endeavors, and whereas DECA provides awareness to the Renton community about local and global issues through participation in multiple and varied community service projects, and whereas the City of Renton deeply appreciates the community service efforts of our local DECA members. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim November 2018 to be DECA Month and Lindbergh and Renton DECA Promotional Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance and witness whereof I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this fifth day of November 2018. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Witchy?
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Witchy, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So we have at least one advisor and several students here to receive the proclamation. If you could come forward and... Anyone who would like to make a few comments, you're welcome to.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Luttrell, and I am the Lindbergh High School DECA Advisor, and we want to thank you so much for recognizing our DECA chapter and have DECA, National DECA Month, and hopefully some of our DECA members will be future council members right here.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl. Okay, now we're moving on to a very special presentation, and I guess I'll call up Chief Ed Van Bailey.
All right, Mr. Mayor, Council President Prince and council members, good evening and thank you for this opportunity. Tonight, we're gonna do a series of promotions, and this is something that has not happened in the last 12 years. With the Chief Milosevic retiring, there was kind of a domino effect as far as the promotion, so this is a very special event. First, I'd like to call forward Kevin Keyes. Commander Kevin Keyes, originally from New York, came to the West Coast courtesy of the United States Navy. Like many other veterans, he turned towards law enforcement. Kevin began his career with the Kirkland Police Department in 1996 and lateral to the Renton Police Department in 2000. Word of Kevin's presence quickly circulated the department with a common theme. You see the size of this guy? What we didn't know at the time, but would quick- what would quickly and clearly become evident, was Kevin's personality, intelligence, and skill outsized his stature. During his service with Renton, Kevin has purposefully and voluntarily worn many hats, in fact, more than most. He served as an undercover narcotic detective, major crimes detective, and a school resource officer. While in those positions, he added several ancillary duties to include field training officer, firearms instructor, and a background investigator. In addition to his law enforcement skills, to me, Kevin's greatest talent lies with his relationships. It would be hard for me to find someone who was more well-liked and respected and has a great reputation than Kevin, both in and outside the department. He represents the best of Renton Police as well as its promising and successful future. Please join me in congratulating Deputy Chief Kevin Keyes on his promotion. And now for something completely different.
Good evening. I now have the honor of presenting Jeff Harden for promotion from Sergeant to Commander. Sergeant Jeff Harden was born and raised in the City of Renton. He graduated from Lindbergh High School in 1988 and began working in the local retail sales industry. In 1996, Jeff was hired by the Renton Police Department and began his work in patrol, a division he has stayed in the last 22 years. Twenty of those he spent on graveyard patrol. In 2001, Jeff became a member of the department's Civil Disturbance Unit, or Riot Squad. While in CDU, he became a member of the Special Arm munitions Response Team, the SART, where he learned the operation of the 40-millimeter, excuse me, less-lethal munition platform, a platform of which the department is moving to with the help and guidance of Commander Harden. In 2003, Jeff became one of the lucky few in the Renton Police Department where he was assigned a partner. His partner hailed from Czechoslovakia, spoke no English, had a hair issue, and preferred the backseat. His name was Kobe, Jeff's canine partner for over six years. 2009, Jeff started his leadership role in the department in the same fashion many do, as a field training officer. This position is often regarded as one of the most important positions in any department. The responsibility of training a new member of the police department is great. Giving just four weeks to impart all the knowledge and experience you have into an individual will actually last a lifetime, Jeff was one of the best. As a successful FTO, it is no surprise that when Jeff tested in 2013 to be a sergeant, he came out number one. In 2014, Jeff was promoted to Sergeant and assigned to graveyard patrol, again. During this time, he established a reputation as a well-respected leader who made good decisions and took care of his people. He was appreciated by his peers and counted on by his commanders. His strong work ethic, positive influence, and connection with the community is often unmatched. Please join me in congratulating Jeff Harden as Commander in this community.
All right, it's my honor to present the next promotion to rank a Sergeant. Officer Pat Morgan comes to us from the Covington Auburn area. Upon graduating from high school, he joined the Marine Corps in 1999 as an infantryman and was deployed twice overseas in support of our military operations. Pat left the Marine Corps in 2003. By March of 2004, he was hired with the Renton Police Department. As an officer, Pat has served as a detective and as an officer in charge, or OIC as we call it. The Renton Police OIC serves the same role as the sergeant with many of the same responsibility. Additionally, Pat has had many ancillary duties during his tenure to include a SWAT officer, defensive tactics instructor, and also teaches first aid to the department. The various roles in which Pat has served the department and community have guided his path to leadership. There is no doubt his dedication to these roles assisted him in achieving the commendable number-one rank on the last recent sergeant's exam. Pat leads by example with his excellent work ethic and fantastic reputation as a good officer and just a good guy. These are a few of Pat's traits that have made him a well-respected member of the department and a dedicated professional who will no doubt benefit the citizens he serves. Please join me in congratulating Pat Morgan on his promotion to Sergeant.
Okay, Jeff, this is a test. Congratulations, Pat.
We'll have a reception with cake and water and some drinks over there if you can make it in time.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Well, now we have an exciting public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Law, members of the council. The city is required to hold public hearings before adoption of the budget as well as the study of the next year property tax levy. We've had three public- we've had two public hearings, one on May 21st and one on October 22nd, and this is the third and final public hearing. All of the hearings have been appropriately noticed, and our- we have- our entire budget in detail is published on the website. In short, the citywide revenues are projected to be 515 million and expenditures at 525 million, with the proposed property tax levy set- proposed at 21.3 million. If you- and with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mayor Law, for public comment.
Good. Thank you, Jan. Any correspondence?
No correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, did- any council members have any questions of Jan? Okay, this is a public hearing. Any staff member or anybody else want to come up and testify? What's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move to the public hearing.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Person, that we close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, thank you, Jan. Moving on to administrative report, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I have one item this evening. Please join us on Thursday, November 8th, from 4:30 to 6 o'clock PM for the UniForm at Haram Bay Church. The theme this year is Wake Up, Stand Up, Speak Up. There will be an educational video, group reflection, a question-and-answer session, and some thought-provoking discussion. Come and participate.
That was short and sweet.
Road closures?
All right.
All the streets are open.
That caught me off guard. I was gonna move on to audience comments, but we have nobody sign up to address the council, so move on to the consent agenda. We have eight items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
Seeing none, I move that the council concur in the consent agenda.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by a bunch of people, but I'll say Mr. Pavoni to- for council to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the committee at the whole has two committee reports.
Okay, the first committee report committed to the whole is the issuance of park improvement bonds. The committee of the whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the issuance of council manic park improvement bonds generating approximately 14.5 million in project proceeds funded by a property tax levy, signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move the council concur with the recommendation of the committee at the whole.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the committee of the whole committee report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Hey, the next report is regarding the 2019-2020 biennial budget. The committee of the whole reviewed the administration- excuse me. The committee of the whole reviewed the administration-proposed 2019-2020 budget in the amounts of 264,802,71 dollars and 260,252,613 dollars for 2019 and 2020 respectively, and recommends concurrence in the following actions. One, property tax levy. Set the 2019 property tax levy using the preliminary property tax worksheet provided by King County showing estimated property tax taxes of approximately 21,300,000 dollars, which includes new construction, annexation, re-leveing, refunds, and levy error. Two, other rates and fee adjustments. Adjust various fees as identified in red in the proposed fee schedule located in Section 7, Appendix of the Proposed Budget. Three, 2019 index of positions and pay ranges. Adjust various positions and pay ranges for 2019 as identified in the 2019 index of positions and pay ranges located in Section 7, Appendix of the Proposed Budget. Adjustments have only been made to non-represented employees. Represented employees, union contracts, are still in negotiation. And four, legislation. Approve the 2019-2020 proposed budget actions, items listed above, and incorporate any adjustments made by city council, draft and present the related legislation for first reading at council's regular meeting on November 5th. Adjustments are as follows. There was an increase for council legal fees related to appeals. That's a plus of $30,000 per year. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move the council concur in the recommendation of the committee at the whole.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the committee of the whole report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to Mr. Person.
Yes, we have one finance committee report.
Okay, Finance Committee, committee report. Approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Accounts payable, total payment of 5,251,447 dollars and 67 cents for vouchers 158, 1518, 10087, 101218, 102518, 369440 through 3694452, 369468 through 369749. Payroll benefit withholding vouchers 5915 through 5924, 369453 through 369467, and 12 wire transfers. Payroll, total payment of 1,411,569 dollars and 57 cents for payroll vouchers, which includes 683 direct deposits and nine checks. This is the October 1st through 15th, 2018 pay period. And municipal court, total payments of 1,174 dollars and 69 cents for vouchers 11215 through 11223. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person?
Well, we had a short evening on the Finance Committee. We only had 61 pages of vouchers to go through tonight, but we just want to let everybody know that we had a bad beaver down in the Goulon Park, but we found it a new home for $440.
I was looking for him.
And our fuel bill for last month was $52,963. That's gonna go up with the new taxes. Our Puget Sound Power bill was 1,212 dollars and 6 cents. Keeps a lot of dollars, keeps those streetlights and the traffic signals running. And for the month of August and September, our Xerox bill was 18,664 dollars and 86 cents. With that, Mr. Mayor, I move that council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, Ms. Witchy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee has one committee report.
Hey, this is regarding the Rainier Avenue North and Benson Road South Culvert Replacement Project Grant Agreement. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute the Flood Reduction Grant Agreement for 1816 with the King County Flood Control District for the Rainier Avenue North and Benson Road South Culvert Replacement Project. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Witchy?
I move that council concur with the recommendation of the Utilities Committee committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Witchy, second by Mr. McGurven, that council concur with the Utilities Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, moving on to Mr. McGurven.
Mr. Mayor, it looks like I may be the only one without any unfinished business tonight, so I'll have to make up for it with new business.
Okay, well, that'll be good. Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Service Committee has one report.
Community Services Committee, committee report regarding the Renton Senior Citizen Advisory Board ordinance. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the creation of a City of Renton Senior Citizens Advisory Board and appoint the following individuals with three-year terms of service beginning on the effective date of the ordinance. These are Ruby Griffin, Peggy Budzu, Shirley Haddock, Sandy Jensen, Sandy Polly, Marge Reep, Patty Reese, and Vicki Richards. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Perez?
I move that the council concur with the Community Service Committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Perez, second by Ms. Witchy, that council concur with the Community Services Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
That will be, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Public Safety has one committee report.
Okay, Public Safety Committee report regarding amending alarm system regulations, Chapter 6.3 of the municipal code. The Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to update alarm-related fees in the city's fee schedule and repeal and replace Renton Municipal Code, Section 6-3, with language and processes that support modern false alarm reduction programs. The committee further recommends the ordinance regarding this matter be prepared and presented for first reading when ready. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni?
So, this report has to do with the- we're taking the- the- I'm having a mind blank for- excuse me.
You want help?
No, the false alarm ordinance that's currently in place is woefully kind of out of date. The numbers regarding false alarms are amazing. 98% of all alarm calls are false alarms. 5% of all of our calls are the false alarm calls, and up to 75% of the false alarm calls are human error that could be fixed. So, we're in the process of getting the ball rolling and taking care of this. So, with that, I move that the council concur with the committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Public Safety Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one Transportation Committee report to present.
Okay, Transportation Aviation Committee, committee report related to the appointment of Donald Wu to the Renton Airport Advisory Committee. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve Mayor Law's appointment of Mr. Donald Wu to the Renton Airport Advisory Committee, Talbot Hill Neighborhood Alternate Position for a term expiring 5/7/2021. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council concur in the committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, I think that takes care of committee reports. Moving on to legislation, we have four ordinances for first reading and three ordinance for second and final reading.
Hey, the first ordinance is regarding the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, adding a new Chapter 211, Renton Senior Citizens Advisory Board to the Renton Municipal Code and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Perez?
I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Perez, second by Ms. Witchy, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Hey, the next ordinance is regarding the council manic bonds. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the issuance of one or more series of limited tax general obligation bonds in the aggregate principle of amount of not to exceed $15 million to finance costs related to parks, trails, and recreational facility improvements, and to pay costs of issuing the bonds, providing the form, terms, and covenants of the bonds, providing for the disposition of the proceeds of the sale of the bonds, delegating authority to approve the method of sale and the final terms of the bonds, and providing for other matters relating thereto.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. McGurven, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Hey, the next ordinance is relating to the- setting the property tax levy for 2019. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, establishing the property tax levy for the year 2019 for general city operational purposes in the amount of 21,300,000 dollars.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, the final ordinance for first reading is the 2019-2020 budget. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the biennial budget for the years 2019-2020 in the amounts of 264,802,71 dollars and 260,252,613 dollars respectively.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next ordinance is for second and final reading is regarding business and occupation tax code changes. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, repealing subsection 52510 CC of the Renton Municipal Code, eliminating the business and occupation tax exemption for certain commercial airline parts, amending Section 52512 of the Renton Municipal Code by revising new business tax credit regulations, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince, sorry to wake you up.[1421.01][1421.04](laughter)
I thought this was finance, so I was, I was waiting.
I thought it was financial development.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman that this ordinance be adopted as read. All, all this requires a roll call.
Okay, Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Ms. Witchy.
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
Hey, the next ordinance is regarding adult entertainment business license code revisions. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Sections 512.4, 512.6, 512.9, 512.10, and 512.11 of the Renton Municipal Code, amending adult entertainment business license regulations, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
Move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman that this ordinance be adopted as read, requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Ms. Witchy.
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
Okay, the last ordinance is regarding business license regulations. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Chapter 5.5 of the Renton Municipal Code relating to business licenses and regulations, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman that this ordinance be adopted as read, and it requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Ms. Witchy.
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, are we, what do we?
Would you like to do the council president election first?
Sure, yes. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I nominate Don Person to be council president.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman to nominate Don Person for council president. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I think he wins, don't they?[1572.38][1572.41](laughter) Congratulations. Uh, you're going to go for the pro temp position?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Carolyn Witchy for pro temp position.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Mr. McIrvin that Carolyn Witchy be nominated for council president pro temp. Any discussion? Any additional nominations? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Any comments from the newly elected officials?
Thank you, and I look forward to filling some very big shoes.
Okay, good. Okay, thanks.
All right, with that, Mr. Mayor, um, next Monday, November 12th, 2018, there are no meetings for the Veterans Day holiday. Oh, the Committee on Committees, we need to form. Committee on Committees are going to be the incoming council president, Don Person, the council president pro temp, Carolyn Witchy, and myself as the outgoing council president. That committee will meet at 4:00 PM on Monday, November 19th, in the council conference room. And then, Committee of the Whole in the conferencing center on the 19th as well. At 6:00 PM will be a school district meet and greet, and that will be held in the council, or in the conferencing center. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, November 19th, at 4:30 PM, the Finance Committee will meet in the council conference room. We have three issues, reclassifications, vouchers, and emerging issues in finance.
Okay, Ms. Witchy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee will meet on Thursday, November 8th, at 3:30 PM in the council conference room. We have two items on the agenda, agreement for local hazardous waste management program projects, and emerging issues in utilities, and that is all.
Okay, Mr. McIrvin.